There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So can I go with my comments now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. My name is Diana Dalsmer and I'm a resident of Northwoods neighborhood. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and for you to hear my concerns. Northwoods is an established rural hamlet consisting of 200 acres and 17 family homes. It will soon be surrounded by the development of Chatham Park's North Village. We live with nature here and are part of a balanced ecosystem. This type of community is becoming increasingly rare in Chatham County, and we will someday become obsolete if not protected. We need to safeguard this neighborhood from the high-density development that will surround it. Northwoods is a place for surface water to seep into the earth, for animals to find food and shelter, and for plants to cover the land. Once destroyed, it will be gone forever. As you are aware, the NCDOT in partnership with Chatham Park are proposing to run North Chatham Parkway through a portion of our neighborhood. The alignment of North Chatham Parkway in 2015 has shifted to the west, utilizing more private land and encroaching deeper into our neighborhood. My husband and I, with our three children, have lived here for seven years. When we bought this property, we were aware of the growth and development that was to come with the evolution of Chatham Park. I understood the landscape surrounding our neighborhood would be transitioning from rural to high-density development. I realize within the next few years, my property will abut high-density housing. With Chatham Park's 7,000 acres, I am disappointed to hear that portions of our neighborhood could be taken to build Chatham Parkway. I had faith in the NCDOT and the developers of Chatham Park to build responsibly. I am still hoping they will walk their talk. This means working in close partnership with the community in order to achieve and preserve a healthy and balanced environment in which to live. Chatham Park and its investors will be the greatest benefactors of this road project. This thoroughfare will be the main artery running through Chatham Park. Proposed intersections will be built along the parkway. One of the intersections is proposed in our neighborhood. This auxiliary road stemming off the intersection will become the second road to run through our neighborhood, destroying additional properties. Chatham Park's encroachment onto private lands would be bleak for the future of Northwoods. There is ongoing concern that our neighborhood's private gravel dead-end road, which is Country Route Brown Road, will eventually connect to the parkway.
Yeah, 15 seconds.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 15 seconds.
Okay. Greenways are being planned to run through multiple properties, private properties. What we are asking is for the NCDOT in partnership with Chatham Park to reevaluate the current alignment of North Chatham Parkway, create a model that utilizes as much Chatham Park land as possible while preserving established neighborhoods and private parcels. Is that the end? Done? Time?
Yes, time.
Okay. I hope I just was able to bring across what my concern was. Thank you.
Ms. Ms. Dalsmer, can you give us your address, please?
Yes, 60, that's 6-0 Haven Road.
Is that a Pittsburgh address?
Pittsburgh, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so our next person will be Kelly.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, you can't see me, though?
No.
Okay, well, that's fine. My name is Daca Kelly. I live at 735 Russet Run. For the last 22 years, thoroughly enjoying my beautiful five-acre farm, surrounded by nature and 17 lovely neighbors on their large lot properties. We are true neighbors and friends. We know each other's names, our residences. We help each other out. As Chatham Park has begun building, it has brought such a sense of peace of mind to us, knowing that our neighborhood will remain a sanctuary for us, for the wildlife, our dogs, cats, chickens, horses, that all live with us in this little donut hole surrounded by Chatham Park land. From all the maps that I've been looking at over the years and attending quite a few of the Pittsburgh town meetings about Chatham Park, it has always seemed as though our little hamlet will remain intact. Quite by surprise, things changed when we found out at the end of December 2020 and beginning of January 2021 now that Chatham Park, the North Chatham Parkway alignment, has shifted west just far enough to cut through our neighborhood and somehow was moved off of Chatham Park land into our neighborhood. It apparently is proposed to go through three privately-owned properties and isolating three more other properties on the other side of the parkway. It feels quite unfair to all of the residents and especially those who are most directly impacted. We do realize there are constraints that NCDOT must follow, and we still implore them to look at this more closely and find another alignment to put the parkway back on Chatham Park land. Ironically enough, in 2018, there was a neighborhood named Northwood in Chapel Hill. Those residents were also surprised to find out during I-40 widening project that the neighborhood was to be divided. They also found this very upsetting, reached out to Chapel Hill and Orange County to compel DOT to find another alignment for the road. Just like us, they were not asking for the road to be stopped, just realigned as to leave our neighborhood intact. Happily for the Chapel Hill-Northwood neighborhood, Chapel Hill and Orange County saw the situation as unfair, and NCDOT did find another alignment for the neighborhood, and the neighborhood was saved. Yay! We are asking Pittsburgh and Chatham County to support us as longtime residents of Pittsburgh and Chatham County in compelling Chatham Park in partnership with NCDOT to find another alignment for this road, which is to support the economic development of Chatham Park, especially since it is projected to only save less than one minute of travel time instead of using 15-501.
You have 15 seconds.
I'm done. Thank you for your time.
So the next one we have... I don't see the Cox on, Mr. and Mrs. Cox. I don't see them. Is Mr. and Mrs. Cox on? If so, will you raise your hand?
Is it possible that they have dialed in on a telephone line?
Right, that's why I was asking them, could they acknowledge some way, somehow? So they haven't. I'm going to mark. Okay, you should be able to talk.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Well, good evening, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to comment, add my comment to my neighbors. My name's Mark Pavel. My address is 421 Haven Road, Pittsburgh. And I'd like to share my concern about North Chatham Parkway. My house is in the Northwoods neighborhood on Haven Creek, downstream from the Mosaic Development, surrounded by land acquired by Chatham Park over the years. My daddy and I bought our place 23 years ago and named it Peacock Haven Farm, which is play on our last name and Haven Creek. In December, my neighbors and I received the Dmailing that announced that Pittsburgh-Chatham Park investors and DOT are partnering on North Chatham Parkway, and that the proposed alignment cuts through and divides our neighborhood and my land. The proposed section on my land is about 200 yards west of land owned by Chatham Park. The proposed alignment surprised me because the 2015 Pittsburgh Transportation Plan showed the north-south road, as it was then called, on Chatham Park land. According to the NCDOT Land Use Scenario Assessment Report from April 2020, the primary purpose of North Chatham Parkway is to support the economic development of Chatham Park. Interestingly, the report also states that their assessment is that the North Village would be developed with or without construction of North Chatham Parkway. Last week, my neighbors and I attended the public information session organized to discuss the North Village Small Area Plan. We had extensive conversation with Chuck Smith, VPO Design, at Preston Development, and Representative from Kinglehorn, the engineering firm supporting the project. Kinglehorn has developed a transportation proposal that meets the requirements of DOT's transportation model for the year 2045. We learned that the major consideration in design was to avoid stream crossings, and that the current proposal crosses 13 streams, while early proposal crossed over 40 streams. We also heard that Chatham Park, from Chatham Park, that the road was shifted into our neighborhood to avoid three small streams. So what's the impact? The current proposal will take about 10 acres of private land from three neighbors and divide Northwoods neighborhood, which will strand four neighbors and about 30 acres on the other side of this limited-access road. Today, we met with DOT and learned that they have not developed a scenario that looks to avoid Northwoods. So we asked them to develop and run that scenario, because it makes no sense and it's not fair to build the parkway through private neighborhood for the benefit of Chatham Park when the road can be built just 200 yards to the east on Chatham Park land. So I respectfully urge the Pittsburgh Planning Department and town leadership to require that Chatham Park and NCDOT find an alignment for North Chatham Parkway that beats the goals of the 2045 transportation model and does not divide Northwoods neighborhood. Thank you again for the opportunity to show my concern for the evening.
And I think that is it.
Those are the only ones that are on there at the meeting tonight.
The only ones that I see, yes.
Okay. Well, there were numerous other comments, which the public had presented. So I think those actually should be placed in our minutes, and all the commissioners need, I think it's been sent to all of the commissioners, and we need to certainly review all of that information.
Oh, Mayor Proton, I'm sorry. Someone just put in that Ms. Cox is dialing in now.
Okay, that'll be fine.
Ms. Baldwin, we can certainly take that and any, any comments that were not provided this evening. Staff has got an advanced copy of some of those comments, and so anything that wasn't dictated into the record tonight, we'll make sure to incorporate those into the minutes as comments that were to be provided as the same as those reiterated or iterated tonight.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bullock, the Cox is in?
I just asked what her number was, because if she's dialing in, I don't know her number, so I'm waiting for the person to respond back.
Is there a response yet, Ms. Bullock?
No, ma'am.
Okay, well, if we'll have to actually place that one in our minutes, just as... SJ, we'll just have to do the same as you had indicated, Mr. Kennedy, with Ms. Cox's comments as well. So we'll move forward now with our consent agenda.
Please note, with the consent agenda, the item eight has been moved. So you're voting on everything as listed, except for item eight is now moved to new business, just as a reminder.
Yes, thank you. So actually, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda as indicated. And of course, there has been, number eight has been removed. So we need a motion to approve that with...
So moved.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Thank you very much. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye in your hand. Raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So we can, now we actually need a motion to, we moved number eight into new business.
Business, right?
New business, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we need to, a motion to go into public hearing, if we could, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll begin with rezoning of the Northwood MUDP, MUPD.
Mayor Proton Baldwin, that's going to be me, Kaylee, presenting for planning.
Thank you, Kayla. Go ahead, please.
Yes. Okay, can everyone see? Can you guys see?
Yes.
Yes, okay, sorry. Eco Northwood MUPD LLC is proposing an amendment to the MUPD rezoning approved April 9, 2018 by the Board of Commissioners. The proposed amendment adds a 2.91-acre parcel, 72825, and modifies the terms and conditions of the MUPD master plan and the illustrative site plan. The 2.91-acre parcel is located at the intersection of US 15501 and US 64 East Bypass. The applicant provided a revisions from previously-approved rezoning document for their explanation of why amendment is needed. The MUPD master plan and the illustrative site plan have both been revised. A total of 91.37 acres was rezoned to MUPD in 2018. Currently proposed is 94.29 acres. Lot configuration and street revisions are proposed in this rezoning amendment. The applicant understands that if the MUPD gets approved, the lot and street revisions in Phase 1 of Northwood will require an amendment to the preliminary plot of Northwood Subphase 1. Please refer to the revisions from previously-approved rezoning document provided by the applicant for a complete list of the proposed changes. The future land use map designates this parcel as commercial. In 2018, 18 proposed lots with a maximum of 21 lots were shown. Now, there are 26 proposed lots shown with a maximum of 26 lots. The tree coverage area, open space, and recreation space proposed is in compliance with the requirements for the Northwood MUPD. The tree coverage area currently proposed is 13.8 acres. In 2018, 11.91 acres of TCA was approved. The open space/recreation space approved in 2018 was 19.35 acres and currently proposed is 23.04 acres. 5% of the gross land in the MUPD must be reserved for recreation space. They are exceeding the 5% required by providing 23.04 acres. This acreage will come from a community park adjoining Lot 9 and from recreational space within the multifamily area, Lot 15. Since the opening of the public hearing on January 25, 2021, there has been one change to the rezoning amendment items, the changes to the tree coverage area plan, specifically the tree inventory chart and the number of trees to be kept. Please note, the total tree preservation area of 13.8 acres did not change. The TCA plan shown at the January 25, 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting had approximately 118 trees labeled to be kept. And this is the chart from the 125 meeting when the public hearing was opened. And these green, if it's labeled green, that means it's labeled to be kept. Currently, approximately 103 trees are labeled to be kept. The January 27, 2021 TCA plan was included in your packet. Majority of the trees that are no longer labeled to be kept are on Lot 26. The applicant communicated that these trees were incorrectly labeled as to be kept, and that is why they were removed. The applicant has also expressed their desire to clearcut Lot 26. The public hearing for this rezoning amendment was opened at the January 25, 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting and continued to the February 8, 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting. No comments were made at the opening of the public hearing on January 25, 2021. And as of February 7, 2021, the planning department has not received any public comment. The planning board met on February 1, 2021 and found the proposed rezoning of parcel 72825 to be consistent with the future land use plan and recommended approval of the rezoning from RA2 to MUPD. The written recommendation of the planning board inadvertently failed to include any recommendation as to the changes of the MUPD master plan and illustrative site plan. The planning board packet contained information on all the proposed changes for this rezoning amendment. Staff finds this property to be in a suitable location for mixed-use plan development, compatible with surrounding uses, inconsistent with the future land use plan. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the proposed rezoning amendment. The recommended motion is to close the public hearing and send to the February 22, 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting for decision. Please note that the applicant engineer here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kelly. Any comments from the board? Questions?
Kayla, in regards to the change of the tree area, can you highlight on that map of the tree save area where Lot 26 is now that they're going to clearcut?
Yes, so Lot 26 is this little... Well, it starts with a little sliver down here that we're adding in. I believe it goes up here. Let me show you the site plan, yeah. So this is Lot 26 right here, so it goes through that bottom parcel they're adding, and then top of the parcel that they already had, and then there's the flag lot up to it right there.
Okay, and I guess maybe for the applicant, that, that lot currently does not have any, any access to any planned access or use. Is that correct?
It has access through the end of that road, but, and there's no planned use for it presently, correct?
Okay. And then, Kayla, I guess on the, the planning board, I wasn't able to attend that meeting, but they, they discussed all of the changes, but only ended up voting on one of the changes?
Yeah, so based on previous direction, I thought it was understood that parcel 72825 was the only item that was getting approved with this rezoning amendment, and that the revisions were to the master plan and illustrative plan were kind of conceptual at this point and would come back to the board at a later date for approval. But unfortunately, this was a misunderstanding, and that reflected in the planning board motion.
Okay.
So Commissioner Schiff, I think the intent from the petitioner was to amend the colored area, as you see on your screen, and not just the portion of property added to this request, but with some, again, some confusion in disseminating information, the planning board's vote limits it to that, but the request remains unchanged, as we best understand it today, and certainly something that the board is considering this as a whole project, not just a simple addition of that one small parcel at the most southern portion of the property.
Yeah, I agree. I think, I mean, that was certainly my understanding that at the town meeting, I'm not sure what happened in the middle between our two town meetings, but there's... There's a lot of confusion over this, which I think is unfortunate from our side. But I, I think that overall, I understand what they're asking for. And it seems reasonable.
Yeah, I think it's an inadvertent misunderstanding, certainly no, no intent on our end. And we'll take responsibility for that, but for the board's consideration tonight, I think the only thing that that perhaps taints is your reliance upon a planning board recommendation. It certainly has no bearing on your decision tonight or your ability to proceed forward with what the, we, again, now know the request to be, and I think what was represented to the board last month on the 25th, when we first opened this public hearing. So again, we'll be happy to walk you through anything that we can to provide you that necessary comfort, despite maybe a planable recommendation that maybe adds to the confusion.
No, I understand, and I am, I know as well, we're not acting on this this evening either, so... Is there anybody signed up to speak?
I don't have anyone, Commissioner Schiff.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and forward it to our next meeting for action.
In a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, you can repeat that. It went out.
Oh, sorry. I made a motion to close the public hearing and forward this item to our next meeting for action.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. It was moved improperly second. I think we did vote on that.
Who did the second?
Commissioner Schiff.
Mr. Schiff.
Okay, thank you.
And did you need to vote again?
No, ma'am, I got that one.
All right, thank you.
And Ms. Baldwin, just for the record, just so for anybody in the audience that they did have any comments, as the, we're forwarding this on as due to the requirements with some of the COVID policy that's in place, that we are entertaining public comment up to 24 hours after the closing of the public hearing. So based on my clock, any comment received between now and 8:53 on Tuesday, February 9, we will admit to the record, and that'll be for the board's consideration as they bring us back to the February 22 regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, where they will then be allowed to render a vote on this, on this item.
Thank you very much, Manager, Mr. Kennedy. Let's move forward now with our next public hearing, zoning text amendment, accessory dwelling units, and secondary ingress/egress.
Thank you. This is Theresa presenting. Good evening, Mayor Proton Baldwin.
Good evening, Ms. Mrs.
Members of the board. Okay. So planning staff is requesting a couple text amendments to the zoning ordinance. This is concerning secondary means of access and accessory dwelling units. So number one in your memo speaks to the multiple means of access. The section states that developments, including subdivisions, provide two separate accesses that have to meet fire code requirements. This is for more than 30 single-family detached duplex remaining. This is for more than thirty single family detached duplex or manufactured home dwellings or more than sixty single family attached or multifamily dwellings. Also, including non-residential mixed use developments that provide more than to provide more than two separate means of access if it's more than thirty feet tall, three stories or sixty two thousand square feet. There's also a section regarding that these requirements may be waived by the Board of Commissioners for reasons including, but not limited to impractical it being impractical due to topography, natural features, cultural resources, configuration of adjacent properties, and or if the proposed buildings are equipped with sprinklers. So there, there is some discretion by the board in making this decision. Item number two in the memo, it speaks to accessory dwelling units. This one's a little more complicated, so at the last meeting for the set two, there was some discussion by the board. Staff tried to address some of those comments, and that's what you see in the blue font. And since packets have gone out, we received some additional comments, and that's what you see in the red. So I'll go through each of those. So the first change in red, this is to relocate the section to section five point two two. This is notes to the table of permitted uses, and we're going to be adding this as note number twelve. This is actually a more appropriate location for this section as ADUs are permitted use in the table of uses. Whereas the other location was more for special use permits, which is what ADUs used to be. And that was changed back in twenty seventeen, but the section wasn't updated to reflect that. On the second change in red is to remove the words in front yards towards the top. So I'm, I'm really not sure what that means. I think it might be a typo. So we're just removing that just for for clarity. On the third change is proposed changes to remove the words behind and down on section C three C. So if the board decides to do that, that basically removes the requirement that the ADU has to be located behind the principal building. So if you want to keep that as a requirement, then we would not remove behind and. So I I don't think it's that much of a concern on on most properties in town as the principal dwelling unit's going to be located in the front or closer to the street where there there wouldn't be enough space to have a ADU in front of the house. So if anything, this would be to accommodate more larger lots in the zoning jurisdiction. The fourth change in blue, section C four. So that requires that the ADU shall not exceed the height of the principal structure. There were some comments made at the last meeting regarding that. And the next change is in red. It's kind of two part, so there was some discussion on wanting to be able to accommodate existing smaller principal dwelling units in town. Let's say a house is currently nine hundred square feet and they would like to have an ADU. You know, they, based on it being fifty percent requirement, they would be limited to four hundred and fifty square feet, for example. So staff was trying to think of a way to to accommodate these situations where, let's say, someone based on the size of their lot and their particular situation, maybe they they want more than four hundred and fifty square feet. So we provided the option of they could apply for a special use permit. And that would be decided case by case. So since packets have gone out, we've had a little, a couple of discussions and think that, you know, there are some cons to special use permits in that that they're, they're kind of difficult to deny on by the board. Basically, if a request meets all findings of fact, it's very difficult to deny. So there's pros and cons to it. You know, a pro is that you could request additional conditions to meet those findings, but the con is that it is actually difficult to deny. So we thought about it some more and thought a a way to accommodate having a larger size, but not not where it seems like the board wants it to be too big, is to increase it to seventy percent of gross gross floor area. But then also having it limited to twelve hundred square feet regardless. So even if you have a four thousand square foot home, your ADU can't be more than twelve hundred square feet. But it also accommodates those smaller homes to to allow up to seventy percent of the gross floor area. The last change of this section is that ADU shall not not count towards the maximum density standards. This is not the same as impervious or stormwater standards. This is just strictly for density purposes. And we can go back to this section, but just to kind of go through them all. Number three in the memo is just to remove the parking requirement, as that was mentioned at the last meeting as well. So again, there's pros and cons to removing parking. Especially if you have large families living on home in on on properties, you know, you you could start to see a lot more vehicles parked. So if it's, you know, that's one side, but trying to be more accommodating to ADUs, we can remove that requirement as well. So the, this is all for discussion for tonight. You know, if the board does come to a consensus where staff can move forward to take this to the planning board, we we can, we can do that. If additional discussion is needed, that's, that's fine, too. And also just to explain, this is a text amendment to our current zoning ordinance. Staff went ahead. We wanted to go ahead and do this. Since this has seemed to be a higher priority for the board, it's been mentioned a few times the past few months. So we wanted to go ahead and do this, if not for anything, as a stopgap. But we do have the update, the upcoming U D O as well. So, you know, we we still will work to incorporate this language into the U D O, make any additional changes as needed. ADUs are kind of a a hard topic to to kind of tackle anyways. So this is just more, you know, to accommodate U D Os, but also make it where it seems like the board doesn't want it, some consensus that we receive is the board doesn't want ADUs to just be, you know, as big as some, anybody wants, basically just a second dwelling unit on a property. So we try to find that balance. So that's, that's kind of where we are at this point. So our recommendation is to hold the public hearing. Close it if the board feels necessary. That's the right step to go in, direct it to the planning board to take up at their March first regular meeting. And please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Thompson. I do have a question before we go to possible public comments. Section D, subsection three, the attached accessory dwelling unit shall, A, have an approved sewage disposal connection or system. And I'm curious how staff would interpret that or foresee it coming into play. I, maybe it was in a book that I was reading recently, or maybe it was in conversation with this board. The scenario was contemplated where the existing sewer account connection, water and sewer connection would be added on to by a licensed plumber presumably to make that sewer connection for the ADU. But would that be acceptable under this language?
It would have to meet the local and state requirements for sewage disposal. So, you know, connecting to a public sewer line or possible septic, but it would have to meet those requirements. So, you know, that would have to go through those necessary steps. And really, that that language, I don't think is is necessary. You know, what what we try to do is just take the existing zoning ordinance language and tweak it a little bit. But moving forward with the U D O, you know, we might look at not having unnecessary language. They would have to meet those standards regardless, whether it's in the the ordinance or not.
And Commissioner Bonnet, I would argue that might be the most important standard in this entire section. Because I think the differentiation between a accessory and a principal is your utility tap. I I would argue that accessories don't have a separate water and sewer meter. Obviously, there is no sewer meter, but they don't have a separate sewer tap. There'd be functionally one clean out, and they would serve off, you know, as as the public infrastructure goes at each, if there's a developed lot, that there is a water meter and that there is a sewer clean out. And everything beyond that point is private infrastructure. And so I think that our our expectation would be that if there isn't a dwelling unit as an accessory to the principal use, that that accessory would tie in to that existing water and sewer infrastructure and not be served separately with their own water account and with their own, you know, sewer tap. Because that that would create demand, and I think that's really what differentiates an accessory from principal.
Thank you.
So maybe we can specify that that would need to be an internal tap and not a separate.
Yeah, I think we could probably tighten that language up a little bit. You know, when you look at our both our our structure for S D F, which is based off of gallons per day and not meter size. You know, if if you, if you run things off of meter size, then you probably cast a broader net, which could be problematic. But if if there's no change in the meter, there's no real change in intensity of the use, therefore adding more credence than its accessory. If, you know, we're basing most of our homes on three hundred and sixty gallons, which is one hundred and twenty per bedroom. In theory, an accessory dwelling by definition has at least one bedroom, so it'd be an extra one hundred and twenty gallons. I think there's probably some tightening up of language of three A of C three A there so that we are creating expectation that we we either are or we aren't expecting someone to come before the board and say, especially under our current condition where they come to the board for all allocation, where someone says, I want to build a mother law suite, I now have to go to the board for a hundred and twenty gallons of sewer allocation.
Right. Well, yeah, thank you for clarifying that, Chris, because that's not how I interpret it, so we'll definitely look at, I'll I'll clean that.
I wouldn't interpret it that way either.
How would you interpret, Mr. Messick?
Connection is a connection. It's not got anything to do with allocation. Connection is the pipe. And like you say, if it's connected to the existing principal pipe, that's an accessory. And so you don't have to, and it's approved by the town. Unless it happens to be a septic system, and then the county would approve it. So I, I mean, I think it's fine the way it is.
Very good.
Okay, great. Mr. Messick's the one who has to defend it ultimately, so.
That's true. If Paul says it's okay, then it's okay.
I'm grateful for the clarifying conversation. Thank you.
And when this gets tested, Mr. Messick will say, it depends.
Connection is different than allocation.
Yeah, I would agree. Yes, sir.
So one, one other question while we're down this rabbit hole, would a approved system be something like a composting system as well? Or would it need to be a sewer connection or or septic?
Yeah, no, I don't think that would meet any environmental health or public safety codes. But I never.
At that point, you're tearing into the code of ordinances and our mandatory sewer connection policy. And what, and the distance that's required with some of those and what we we certify as a, as a system. And I don't think the language in the code of ordinances accounts for that at this time.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
I have just a couple of comments. This seems to be, I guess, are we expecting a lot of accessory dwellings to be coming online soon? Is this something that people are going to start putting up in their backyard?
This certainly would help.
Mr. Farrell, accessory dwelling units are a pretty common affordable housing tool. And so to have it, the way we have it now is a permitted use, but we don't have any, any regulations or any standards or any definition of what is allowed or not. You know, sort of begs the question. So if you're going to allow them, then you need to be able to provide for how you define them and and where they should be located and how they should be built. So that's the purpose of this.
Okay. My other comment is the, maybe the twelve hundred square foot. I think that's a fairly good sized accessory dwelling myself. Was that the original square footage that we started with?
Well, we didn't have an original. There was a concern that just a blanket fifty percent was too much. And then the proposed U D O actually limited to eight hundred square feet. So we tried to find, walk that line somewhere in the middle and present that. Because we, there were comments on both sides.
And the, and the seventy percent for part of that as well was aimed more towards rather than, I mean, you can create as much language as you would like in a standard, but rather than having a, everyone's permitted up to this amount or this percentage of an amount, and then this maximum out. We, we just tried to stick to just two of the standards saying you get up to seventy percent or the lesser of seventy percent or twelve hundred square feet. Again, the, every number that you see listed in front of you is up for debate, and that's that's why we want to have this conversation this evening, that if, if you're more comfortable at eleven fifty than you are at twelve hundred or at eight fifty, that's certainly the conversation for this board this evening. If seventy percent gives you any heartburn, you know, we can look at any number on the spectrum. Again, we're creating policy that's going to be tested, and there's going to be probably great exemplary examples of this into fruition. And there'll probably be one we go, man, I really hate that one, but the other, the other six that we saw are good. And that's just how testing of zoning ordinances go. There's always going to be some give positive and negative to it, and, you know, we may refine this over time. Whatever you approved with this, if you prove anything, we could very easily back in six months saying, well, that didn't work out. Let's do this. That's, I think we want to be reactive and proactive as we can be, but also be reactive and say, we're not married to this if it doesn't work out. We're, we're taking, we're taking a shot at it. We hope that it provides some affordable housing in town and some accommodation for people to to be in in Pittsburgh. But if if this policy falls on its face, we'll, we'll pivot accordingly.
Chris, I'm looking, where, where did you see where's the seventy percent? I'm sorry, I'm blind, but.
If you look on the screen right now.
It's on the screen, sorry. Yes, sir.
I'm looking on the paper.
Down towards the bottom.
Okay. To seven is what we're shooting for.
Yes, sir. We, we had, we had some, we had some last minute conversations, just trying to make sure this language was as tight as, as as we could get it for this evening, knowing that it will likely tighten up even more. And so that was one of the, the changes that we did was for trying to attack that lesser amount for the people who, you know, if you got a small home and you want an accessory, you're not limited to a two hundred square foot, you know, accessory dwelling unit. But you, that you could have a decent size, and so that's where the seventy percent came in.
With a twelve hundred maximum, correct?
Yes, sir.
Twelve hundred square foot max. Okay.
But that number, like, like Chris said, but all of those numbers are subjective, and if you like a better number, then let us know.
I'll tell you, I think I didn't see seventy percent coming, but I think it's a really good idea because of the fact that somebody's got a fourteen hundred square foot home. So now their accessory is seven hundred? Well, no. And then the twelve hundred, yeah, I mean, I can even go bigger than that because, you know, this applies to very large lots out in the country that have, you know, very large homes on them, so. It's, it's an interesting dynamic. I think the seventy percent's a good stroke.
And the, and the roll home is where A- and the, and the rural homes is where in that, in that C four that you see stricken, the special use permit was kind of aimed towards some of the rule that if someone needed to exceed that number because of a special condition, um, like being on ten acres or something like that. Um, but we felt like the standard as is fit the purpose that someone could always certainly subdivide property and, and build the size that they would like. Um, and if, if it really becomes a problem, it's, it's easy enough for someone to bring it to the board in a legislative item, not a quasi judicial item, and petition for a text amendment to increase that square footage or find some accommodating language that, uh, is, uh, generically applied throughout the jurisdiction, but serves their individual need.
Thank you. I do have one other comment and I want, I'd like to thank, uh, Teresa and him for this, uh, ingress and egress, because I have been myself and commissioners have been pushing for this for a long time. The only concern I have on that is num- is number C. And, um, where it says these requirements may be waived by the Board of Commissioners. Um, to me, that's just opening up, uh, maybe a way for a developer to say, I'll just go to board with this and it's, you know, maybe not go over the, uh, fire marshal with all this and, uh, maybe we need to go back and review C with our fire marshal's office. Because I believe that, that you're going to have more developers coming back to the board i- for reasons where it says, but not limited to. So, I mean, they could, it could be any kind of, didn't want to go around the tree or something. I don't know, but it's, I'm sure we're going to hear all kinds of, uh, issues bringing it back to the board.
Well, and, and Commissioner Farrell, the, that is written in a very open and in manner intentionally to, uh, and it's also relying upon the fact that we feel like the board will consider the input of the fire department and the fire marshal. And that the bar will be that we will have input. We're working on refining our staff procedures as we, as for items that come to the board. Um, with a technical review committee that is comprised of our staff, but also the fire chief and the fire marshal. Um, they'll provide comments to these applicants and, but knowing that there might be some, some very unique circumstance that the board goes, yeah, I just don't think that, given how this lot is shaped or other topography or any, any reasoning that may come across, that we might want to exceed it. Now, they will also probably be asked to provide some mitigation of that. You know, if you, if you're not going to provide the standard, then how are you going to accommodate it otherwise? Um, but I don't, I don't think that the subsection C here, as you see listed on the screen, is intended to write out the advice and the expertise of the fire marshal. I think it's staff's presumption that the board in, in, in their decision-making will utilize, uh, the expert that is, um, tasked with this. And you'll use that as part of your consideration and it will be the, the developer's, um, burden to find something that wouldn't agree with the fire marshal. Cause the fire marshal has the ability also to recommend that this not be adhered to strictly as it's listed in the fire code appendix. Um, and so basically where it's putting the burden off of the fire marshal for rendering it or giving them full authority to say yea or nay, it basically puts the onus on the fire marshal to make a recommendation to our board of commissioners and for the board of commissioners to then render a decision based upon that recommendation.
Yeah, I understand. I just, uh, I don't know. I just don't like the way that's read. I would maybe like the, uh, planning department to review that paragraph with the, uh, fire marshal's office.
Chris, how, how would that approval work? Would that be, would that be at, uh, site plan approval after they've gone through the, the design and the other things? Or would that be a separate case that they would come to the board at the beginning of their kind of design process?
I don't think it would be a separate case. I think you're generally going to see it in your preliminary plats.
Correct.
I agree. That basically they're going to come before you with either a legislative or a quasi judicial item that's, that's going to have that and they're going to ask for that relief. And, and either mechanism, either as legislative where you have a greater discretion or even an under quasi judicial where you have the ability to provide discretion as well, either a quasi judicial proceeding, that in either circumstance, you're allowed to, uh, deviate from the standard if they present you a compelling argument. And I think it will be done at the preliminary plat more times than not. It wouldn't be as late as the site plan.
Okay, because i- i- and I guess my, my question is based around like how much, how much risk would be on the developer to, to develop a plan that requires a waiver, um, by the board of commissioners? Uh, I, I guess, I, I think it, it would probably be an exceptional case if they would take, take the risk to go through design without this and then ask the board to, to approve that, it seems like, but.
I, I would say that generally they're going to have it factored in into their, uh, initial entitlement. Um, to, to have this clarified because it's likely going to be, i- if the reasoning is so substantial that it just cannot be done. And that's what they're going to argue, that it cannot be done. That's going to be attended to very early in the process.
True. They're, they're not going to be willing to design, you know, multiple access points if, if they think that there's an opportunity to get you all to waive it and there be, the burden would be on them to come forward with whatever reasons they think are justify the, the waiver. And then you all could decide yes or no. And if you say no, then they got to go back to the drawing boards and come up with a multiple means of access. It's pretty straightforward to me.
I, I would think at a minimum as well that we would eliminate the O R in C that they would be required to have a automatic sprinkler system if they were going for that, uh, exception.
So you're suggesting that, that, that it'd be mandated if there was only one ingress and egress?
Uh, and, and obviously the other conditions above, but if they wanted to apply for the waiver, they would need to show they have an automatic sprinkler.
Okay.
I can talk to the fire marshal about that as well. Get his opinion.
Well, isn't this list a series of O R's? That anyone can stand alone and be the justification?
Sure. That's, that's the way it's written currently.
Yeah, it's not intended to be a compiling list where you must address, you must have a problem with all of those or conflict with all of those. It's, you know, topography, period, natural features, period, et cetera. Um, it could be any of those, but if you, i- you could, you could get through, you know, configuration of adjacent developments and or dwellings, buildings and stop it there and then have maybe a, a C lowercase a and say, if you are granted a waiver from your secondary ingress and egress, you shall provide automatic sprinkler systems or something like that.
That's what I was getting at. Uh, yes, how have we worried?
That's probably the proper compiling of the subsections.
Okay. And I don't know how the commissioners feel about that either, but.
I don't like it to be mandatory. I like it to be optional. I mean, I'm a, a fully support of sprinkler systems and, uh, I don't know how many times I heard, uh, Fire Marshal Bender tell me ninety-six percent of how, of fires have stopped with a sprinkler system. And, uh, I don't doubt those stats, but, uh, to make it an absolute, I think anything in a zoning ordinance that is an absolute is kind of, uh, can be treacherous. I think that's one of the reasons for C being, you know, this opportunity for an extraordinary situation. Cause honestly, I don't know that there's many commissioners who want to go against the recommendation of the fire marshal. I don't want to be that guy.
I, I mean, I don't think we'd be able to, if the fire marshal says there's two required, I don't think that we can go against that anyway. I, I think it would be the fire marshal saying, one would be a- as we've seen recently, I think where the fire marshal would say one is acceptable.
Right.
And the board would still require to, in addition to the fire marshal's recommendation.
I'll, I'll, I'll defer to Paul, but I would say you are the policymakers. You have the ability to supersede the fire marshal's comment. Is, if that's a good idea or not is a different question, but I, I think you certainly have the, the legal authority um, to take that recommendation, ball it up and put it in the file, as they say. Um, so, uh, again, best, best advice, probably not, but the ability to do so, absolutely. You have, you are the policymakers and you have the authority to supersede any staff comment because it'd be no different than ours or, or, or the fire marshals.
Commissioner Farrell, did you have a thought?
Um, I, I'm pretty much leaving my thoughts as is, uh, I would, I would like some conversation with our fire marshal regarding C. He, it may be a better way it could be worded. Um, I just think we're opening the doors for developers to find a way to bring it to the board of commissioners without doing a second road. That's just the way I feel. I don't, I'm no lawyer like Mr. Messick or anything in the, but I would feel much better if our fire marshals had just commented on this section.
And Commissioner Farrell, we could absolutely get that for, for the board.
Okay.
Uh, just provide that comfort. Um, again, our, our thought was that the board would, would utilize the comment of the fire marshal. Um, and that we would provide that to them. And I think the, the key is that the, the burden of proof on the developer will be to show that it can't be done. So that the deference is that it must be done. Um, and so as they come forward, they'll have to just blow you away with information saying that this cannot be done. Um, and so I, I, I think there'll be a greater, a greater percentage of these that go in because of this. I know the, the fire department, the fire marshal are both excited that we're adding this to the zoning ordinance because they felt like they didn't have the teeth to render recommendations. This came up with a few of the recent projects and while we're bringing it up tonight, is that having this in our zoning ordinance provides them the ability to enforce it. Um, and so I, I think while, while they may wish to have the full autonomy of the decision, I think it's best served with our board. Um, and I think though, but I think they'll be their second best is they're just glad something's in our ordinance.
Hmm. And, and part of the reason is that the fire code, it, as it currently exists, allows the fire marshal to require more than one access point. But the practical problem is that unless the town required it as well, the fire marshal was not inclined to require the second access. Now that you, if you can, if you adopt this, that you require the multiple access points, then the fire marshal can say, yeah, you need them. Uh, so I think that, that, that was the, I mean, that's the reason for doing this is to give him some hat, some, something to put his hat on. But it'd be, you know, but he certainly ought to have a right to review this and, and give you all his opinion.
I, I would, uh, be a little more pleased with, if we would just have some comment from, uh, Mr. Judson.
I, I agree with that. And as, uh, as we received a written comment on this hearing item, um, four or five hours ago, um, it's also possible that, uh, a, a second, uh, entrance egress would be necessary in cases other than fire. And so requiring automated sprinkler systems is not necessarily going to address those needs for an evacuation route, for example.
That, that's correct, John. Thank you.
So.
Yes, I, I, I will definitely contact the fire marshal. Um, we did call him before, um, so he's aware of the language, but, um, it was more to get a copy of the most current fire code. I wanted to make sure we were looking at the correct appendix D, um, the one that they look at. So for comparison, but we didn't, we didn't specifically talk about the section C or anything like that. So we'll, we'll do that.
Okay. Thank you, Teresa. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Any additional questions or comments from the board? If not, then we need a recommendation to forward this to the planning board.
Question I have for the board, Ms. Baldwin.
Yes.
Is, does, is the board comfortable with the language this evening? Um, or would you like us to, um, uh, it, it sounds like we're pretty well set on the accessory dwelling units. I think everyone, it sounds like there's, there's a comfort level with that language. Um, are you okay with us proceeding to the planning board, knowing that there might be a few tweaks to the language between now and the planning board? Um, and then the, the plan would have this come back to the board of commissioners in March. Um, and then also you can see, you can review any changes that would have occurred in that time. Is that okay with the board in terms of the process?
I, I think so. I mean, it'd be good to know what the planning board thinks as well, um, a- as long as we're clear on what the planning board gets the, uh, it, the information to, to give back to us, I guess.
We'll be, we'll be sure to give them not the, the requested application again and, and make something up and have it be different for the recommendation for what y'all will get, so.
Right, thanks.
No.
Perfect.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thompson, for your work on this and Mr. Kennedy.
Yes, sir.
Sir.
Thank you all very much. So we do need, is there any additional comments, concerns regarding this? If not, we need a motion to go out of public hearing.
Well, I will make a motion. Well, so in addition to going out of public hearing, let's forward this to the planning board.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Thank you. Let's go forward now with our new business. If we could, we have no old business. So with town Pittsburgh, town hall site plan. Thank you.
It's me, ma'am. This is Teresa again presenting. The town of Pittsburgh is requesting site plan approval of the new town hall to be located downtown at the, at fifty West Salisbury Street. Town hall will have frontage on Salisbury and Hank Street. The property is approximately one point two six acres. It's currently undeveloped and being used as a parking lot. There is once a grocery store located on the property, then it was a sign shop. Uh, lastly, it was a thrift shop, which was, the building was demoed, demoed a few years ago. And the property, which is highlighted in blue, is zone C four, which is the downtown central business zoning district. And the use is considered a public office building, which is permitted by right in the C four district. The gross floor area is seventy-seven thousand four, four hundred and sixty-four square feet. And this includes the parking deck. The floor area of the building is forty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-two square feet. Town offices and the board meeting rooms can be located in the building. Second and third floors are also going to be utilized and leased by town county offices. There's no minimum parking standards in the C four district, but there's, um, a proposed a hundred and twenty-five spaces. And I noted, I saw a note that three of them are going to be for electric vehicle charging stations. Um, the request also proposes bike racks, benches, addition, uh, screening and stormwater controls, and none of those are required for this property. So that's just, um, going above the standards. Um, there's also a request for nine hundred and eighty-five gallons per day for sewer allocation, which, um, is needed after subtracting the allocation that was previously established by the prior grocery store. And the town board has, uh, put, set aside allocation for this project. Oops, excuse me. So the plans have, um, been reviewed in accordance with town zoning ordinance. There was also preliminary reviews done by town engineering, the public works department, fire department. Um, also county, fire marshal and building inspections departments have seen these site plans as well. Therefore, staff recommends approval and recommends the board to approve the site plan, approve the sewer allocation request and authorize hot architects to go to bid with this set of drawings. And please let me know if you have any questions. And please let me know if you have any questions. Representative from, from Hobbs is here tonight as well, in case you have questions for them.
Any questions from the board? Comments, concerns?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor then?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great presentation, Taylor.
Thanks, Chris. I, I appreciate that. One, one of my best.
But Taylor, if you would like to talk.
No, ma'am, I'm ready. I'm, I'm, I'm happy with that decision. Let's move on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all. So let's move forward now with John. With the federal carbon free and dividend policy. Commissioner Bonnet.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pretend Ray Baldwin. So what we have before us tonight is a draft resolution. Calling on the United States Congress to address climate change. By enacting the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act. The EICDA. In December of 2017. Pittsburgh Town Board approved unanimously a resolution. That was in general. In support of the Congress. Considering this kind of policy. There were drafts at the time. But now we have an actual. EICDA that has been proposed in both the House and the Senate. We don't know where it falls in the. In the business that, that the Congress is going to be very busy with this year. But we have an opportunity to. Repeat that statement of support. And. Yeah, so. That's, that's where I'll leave it. I'm very eager for questions or concerns.
John, I guess I had. Little confusion maybe on it. The, I was just getting more or less concerned about this fee on the fossil fuels. And how it was enacted. Who is going to be? I guess when I look at a fee and any kind of dividend, it looks like to me it's possibly. Going to harm the middle class, the lower class people in our society. What kind of dividend or? Is a return on this? I just, I just don't know that I can support anything that's. If it's a fee, I'm sure the fee is going to be tacked on to the fossil fuels from the start.
That's right.
They're going to raise prices on fossil fuels, the gases and all that. That's just, maybe you can help me out with that.
That's right. Well, you're, you're exactly right, Commissioner Farrell, that the idea is to add the fee. At the source of the fossil carbon. So that would be at the well. Or at the mine. For, for, in the case of coal, it'd be at the mine or at the natural gas or oil well. The fee is then. Gathered by. The Internal Revenue Service, as I'm understanding it. There would be an administrative cost, of course, to the program. In the early years. It looks like it's going to be 7%. In the next five years of the program, it is likely to reduce to 5%. Of the total revenues that are collected from that fee. But because. Of the nature of the dividend, coming back to individuals. Individual taxpayers. The analysis that's been done by. Conservatives, liberals, by. Republican sponsored inquiries. It, it seems very clear. That it's going to benefit those of us of lower incomes. Overall, you can also imagine. That. Folks who, who consume an awful lot more. Of fossil energy are probably wealthier. So. That, that's been rea- fairly reassuring to me. There has been a lot of analysis done on it. And I guess I did not share with, with you all. In advance of this. There is a document that was presented. Prepared for the Town of Pittsburgh. With all kinds of detailed information about this. Type of legislation. And so, you know, if what I've just shared just now is not reassuring, or if you've got additional questions, I'll try and handle them. I'd be very happy to. Table this. Until we're all comfortable with it. I certainly don't want to move forward with. Without your support, Mr. Farrell, because. I, I do recall that, that I believe you supported. Or abstained in 2017, so. Would you like to read this, this? This document? It's about a. 12 pages of information with another. 20 pages of endorsements. From. Various newspapers and think tanks and universities. So economists.
John, I think if, if that was prepared for. Pittsburgh in relation to this, it would be good to share with, with the board.
I'd be very happy to share that.
And then a question too about. About just what we were talking about says that it would. It would protect low income, or sorry, it would protect low and middle income citizens. By giving payments to all American households. So I, I guess I expected that more to say that they would go to loading, low and middle income citizens. If it's trying to protect them by giving that.
Well, I don't think you, you want it to only go to one segment of the population. I think you want everybody to gain the benefit of the dividend because. That way we can all make those investments using that dividend, like. Upgrade to a more efficient car. Or do some weather stripping in your house with that dividend. These kinds of things. Are a big part of the reason why. The dividend concept has been embraced so widely is, is that it. It empowers us with the decision and the opportunity as individuals to make those choices about. Going on a diet, if you will, fossil fuel diet, finding those clever ways that we can. Reduce our own consumption.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonnet. If you would certainly share that with the board, we would certainly appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Are there more questions right now, or should we table the matter?
I, I do have one, and you know, when it comes to the affordability of housing equation. Oftentimes there is the discussion of vehicle models traveled. And that folks live further away from their jobs because of the affordability issues. And I can see how that would actually impact their, the cost of living. You know, for the, the use of the energy. So it's an interesting dynamic.
It is. And. This may be going a little bit into the weeds, but. I've reassured myself in my concerns about those of us who live. In the outskirts. Or have longer drives because of our rural home. Or that we commute to work. I've reassured myself about those concerns as this plan proposes to increase. Gasoline prices intentionally. Because I'm convinced that in the next three years. We're going to see the cost of transportation in general decline. As battery electric vehicles proliferate very dramatically. I, I'm convinced that probably by five years. More than half the market for new vehicles. More than half of the new vehicles sold will be electric vehicles. And they'll likely be less expensive than gasoline vehicles. And that is because battery prices are, are plummeting so rapidly. The energy density of batteries is increasing so dramatically. And the cost of storing energy in batteries is, is just improving dramatically. So. I'm not sure that, you know, like I said, that's kind of in the weeds and that, I don't think that the information. In this information packet does include that, but. I appreciate you bringing that up, Commissioner Fioke. Affordability of housing is definitely largely dictated by. How far we have to drive or what it costs us to get to where we need to go to work or buy things.
Well, and as you mentioned, the weather stripping and, you know, energy efficient homes. I mean, what's the, it's not affordable housing, it's affordable living, right?
Yes. Excellent point. Well, thank you, friends. I appreciate this, this time and consideration. I will. Circulate this document. It's called the Pittsburgh Resolution Informational Aid. You'll see that in your inbox tonight. And. I look forward to revisiting this on the agenda. At our next meeting. And thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for your help with getting that on the agenda.
Yes, sir. And, and what we'll do is we'll put this under old business. On the February 22nd agenda. To, I don't think we're at a point now where it's a comfort level to have it on consent. To allow us to have a, another conversation to regroup after Commissioner Bonnet sends some materials out. For the board's sake, and then we'll bring this back on the new business. So look for that on the February 22nd agenda.
Excellent.
Thanks, John.
John, you said you were going to send that address out.
Yes, it's actually a document. I'll send it tonight.
Thanks, sir.
You bet.
You all very much. Is there any additional commissioner comments? Or concerns? If not.
I do have some comments.
Okay.
Teresa, thank you. Welcome. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you. I, I really look forward to meeting everyone in person one day and. I met a couple of you so far, but, and just getting to know everybody in town. And on the planning board, so just, I'm super excited and just, just looking forward to. Working with everybody. And just, if there's, if there's anything that I can do in the meantime, it's. I think, you know, there's, there's so many things on our to-do list right now and. We're just, we're just just trying to tackle it. There's only so much, so many hours in the day, so. We just ask for a little bit of patience while we, we go through this transition period. So, but thank, thank you, thank you so much.
A couple of things. And one has to do with our website, well, not our website, but our SharePoint. Portal and the way we're doing our agendas. Can we look into some kind of filing? Protocol where it would, the, the documents that are presented to us would reflect the way they're organized in the agenda. Because it does come as a jumble and it, you know, I'm sorry, but I got. The idea of like looking through the agenda on paper and it being sequentially. Organized and then when we do it on the web. It, it is, it's kind of jumbled. So two items that are, you know, the same topic will be separated by, you know, a couple of lines. So whether it's starting them with A or starting them with one, you know, I don't know, but if we could do something. I think it would be.
We, we can do that. I mean, I think the, the easiest way to do that is to number them. In order in which they're placed on the agenda. And then. Go ahead, Cassie, you have them.
So when they get updated at the very last minute, you can't put them into that order unless I delete. And then try and get it back to number two. Say if it's number two, try and get it back to number two, but usually it just goes to the very end.
But if it has the number two in the, the very first. Digit of the file name is number two, won't it then sort itself again?
I can try that. I have not tried that yet.
Yeah, I don't know what the solution is, but I do hope it'd be helpful if we had one.
Because it's organized on the website, but just the SharePoint was a little different.
And if nothing else, you may end up. Again, there's probably a way we can supersede it because. You may not care about a previous iteration of it. We'll have probably a record of it here. But you probably only care about what's the latest and greatest. That the, even if you had the iterations, it might be. You might have one and then two, two with. Two being the original and two being revised, but at least it would be in order.
Right.
Um, right. We'll, we'll play with it and work with that. I think one thing that we want to do too is as we, you know, change our town website. And then we can also do with the, the SharePoint. Is just provide you a full packet that's in order, that you can just scroll through one. That's. That is the ultimate logic of having the iPads for the board's disposal. Is to be able to scroll through the packet as, as we work through the agenda and not have to click on.
Yeah.
Now, if you're sitting at home on a Saturday night, I know like all of you do, you. Are very studious and you spend your entire Saturday evening studying the packet before Monday. That if you want to read, you know, just the MUPD for Northwood. I don't want to make you scroll through 200 other pages. That's why they're as individual items. But as, as for the, the SharePoint, which has a lot of capacity. And our new website, which will have much greater capacity, we can upload packets and not just. A list of items that comprise the packet, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yep.
The other thing that was on my mind was. We had an item this evening. Where we were, I think, very wisely spending some money to increase a water line from six inch to eight inch. And I appreciate, Chris, you seeing that as an opportunity and capitalizing on it because I think that's a smart, smart move. I'm curious. I don't know the answer, but I know we're also doing that with the circle project or taking a two inch line and replacing it with a 12 inch line. Are we extending that all the way to Masonic and tying on to the? New eight inch line that Eagles is putting in?
Yes, sir. So you, you don't have that in front of you yet. You saw that in a weekly update a number of weeks ago.
Okay.
Talking about it. But to date, what we have done in, in the dollar amount. I was able to, to handle without going to the board. But we are working with Kimberly Horn on the design of that 12 inch line right now. So that, that was, that was a small dollar amount. Basically, they took their existing drawings they had for the 12 inch line they designed for the DOT project. We are working independently of the DOT project. And that's an important distinction because we didn't want. Sunrock or anyone dealing with that to be able to add on to the contract timeline. We are very, very clear that the deadline is October 30th. And so we told them we will find another contractor if Sunrock isn't able to handle that project. And so we're going through the design. We should have that in the coming days. Kent, our town engineer, has been working really hard with the folks at Kimberly Horn to get that process for us. And so the, the design there will be, there'll be a new 12 inch line that goes all the way down. And goes across South Masonic. And connects right about where that hydrant is that's existing. And then the eight inch line that comes from the Eagles project is going to come down from. You know, from East Salisbury to Hillsborough. And 1551 comes down to the block to Masonic, works its way down beside the. Eagles project goes under East Street, Business 64 and connects at that hydrant. So what that'll do is it'll create a loop. In the system, that'll be 12 inches down East Street, which will get connected further down as we continue with water line improvements on East Street. And then the eight inch will loop back all the way to 1551, creating. As the best probably possible water pressure that we can get with these projects. These hydrants were of utmost concern when the, the courthouse was on fire about a decade ago. And so now that we've got a couple of projects in the world. And so now that we've got a couple of projects in the works, we're kind of back ending our way into them, but again, as I say, better late than never. So what we're really trying to do is make sure we get that proper loop in the system. And as I put in my memo, it it's doesn't sound correct because a six and an eight sounds pretty close, but an eight-inch line has double the capacity of a six-inch. So it is a substantial increase in pressures and water quality that we don't have to deal with a two-inch line in that area, so. Um, I I as as much as maybe that's why I'm suited for this field, that I'm excited about that. As as dumb as that may seem, looping water lines excites me.
Well, you're building a bigger system with a few little sticks, so I, well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's just on that quick, I know we talked a little bit about the connections from those water lines to the to the meters. Are those also being looked at as a part of this project?
Any connections that are there, any taps are just retapped? So so basically, anything that's abandoned from there. Oh, you're talking about the uh
There's a term about like old galvanized pipes from from those lines to the meters.
Yeah, the those, I'll have to catch up with Kent on that. Uh, we talked about that in email last week. Um, but I'll I'll give you some more updates on that. I I have to catch up and see how those are getting fitted in. Um, because they'll have to be, they're served off those ma- that primary distribution. So they'll have to get renewed in in some shape or manner. We'll see what we can do to get those upgraded to.
Okay, and I mean, imagine it's condition based and material based itself, so.
Yeah.
No problem, just just wanted to make sure.
As I've said before, barring, you know, in in a vacuum and and cost being uh in a vacuum as well, we're gonna get rid of all the two-inch galvanized line we can. That is a, it's it's kind of just obnoxious that we have as much as we do. It it serves a purpose, but we'll be dealing with with uh increments in excess of six inches from here out.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just I just have one thing. I'd just like to thank the board and all the staff for all the thoughts and prayers, the phone calls that that we all received during Charlene's illness, and it very much was appreciated. We really do. We really appreciate everybody. Makes you feel good to still live in a small town like this.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrell. We're glad to have you back.
Hey, thank you. Thank you.
Glad she's doing better.
Yeah. Give Charlene our best.
I will. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Kennedy, I just had one thing, and that was to ask if if you had received the affirmation you sought regarding the Chatham two fifty founding day fee. Or if you didn't receive any feedback, I want to give the thumbs up on that. A five hundred dollar contribution from the town, I think, is is quite modest and and appropriate for the uh immensity of the occasion of Chatham County uh celebrating, recognizing or recognizing our two hundred and fiftieth year since founding.
Yeah, I I have not yet, but I was gonna allow the board to to duly consider that. You know, the what Mr. Barnes is referring to is um as part of the Chad two fifty effort. Um, uh, the mayor and I are both involved in some subcommittees of that. Um, it was asked of me if the town of Pittsburgh will be interested in sponsoring the Founder's Day event, which will be held in April. Um, I think it's actually a good fit because it's actually uh gonna be working around our future town hall site. Um, and so we're working through some of the particulars of of how that's gonna be routed, and and that site may or may not be utilized. Uh, I've been talking with Hillary Pollan at 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 Chatham County. She's been a tremendous asset to that effort. Um, and uh Sour City have been asked uh to talk about our sponsoring some an event later in the year for the parade, and so they just felt like the uh Pittsburgh reciprocating that effort at the at the front end uh would would be great. So um the amount would be five hundred dollars, and it would put the town of Pittsburgh logo and such into the the materials, and not that's what we're here for publicity or anything. Uh, we're just here to do a good job, but um I I think it would be well welcomed by that by that committee and and certainly would be acknowledged that the town of Pittsburgh is sponsoring that event and and is a sole sponsorship. It is not a combination of sponsors, and so it would be solely sponsored by Chatham Pittsburgh.
So it's it's certainly uh at your uh discretion, I think, but I I hope that other board members agree that that's worth supporting.
I can certainly agree to go forward with that.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for reminding me.
And and uh and I also want to apologize, Mr. Kennedy, for my non-responsive to 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 your excellent updates and and weekly updates and and efforts at communicating with us, but I've just been overwhelmed recently with my day job and I want to apologize for that, but.
Oh, no worries. I I know the feeling about a day job taking a lot of time.
Back back to this Chatham two fifty thing. It 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 rather overwhelms or overshadows a a very small commemoration that I'm recognizing, and I'm curious if others are are interested in this. I happen to note that the the bridge, it used to be the old Highway sixty-four bridge that crosses a creek there between uh CCCC, uh the walking trail and the Boy Scout hut. Uh, that bridge was built one hundred years ago this year. And um I've been rather curious about that and and um toying with the idea of maybe even um asking the Historical Association if they would help sponsor a an essay contest, because I think it'd be real interesting to see what some innovative or eager uh researcher, high schoolers, or even uh college kids from Chatham County might be interested in trying to dig up on the history of that bridge or similar bridges that were built in that era in the nineteen twenties. Anyway, I just thought I'd mention that as if anybody happens to know if there are existing bridges that were built that same year elsewhere in town. That's the only one I'm aware of.
The person I would ask would be Mr. Messick, so.
I saw him stood up straight.
He may he may or may not know, but that's who I would ask.
I I have been on the bridge, but I don't remember the plaque, and um if if John's been seen it, I I'd take his word for it.
Yep.
But it was the, you know, it was the old Highway sixty-four to Sauer City, and
Yes.
You you know, there probably were more than one of them, so um.
That's one thinking.
There's probably a joke in there that Paul was the town attorney when that bridge was built. I need Paul for a lot of things, so I won't I won't actually say it.
Context.
Yes, sir.
I think you have some association with the Boy Scouts there, don't you?
Yes, sir.
Well, maybe I'll follow up with you about that. I'd I'd be curious if if anyone there might have any interest in such an effort.
Okay.
I I think that was also mentioned in the pedestrian plan as a potential path, uh footpath from
Yes, thank you.
CCCC or not, yeah, I guess uh that from the school to the Ag Center. Because that's I've I've walked that, um, and it it gets a little tough towards Ag Center.
Yeah, yeah, and it looks like some folks have bushwhacked a bit of a trail, but their last time I was down there, a couple of trees and falling across it, and as you say, it gets uh scattered and tenuous towards the end there near the parking lot of the Ag Conference Center. Anyway, thanks, friend. I'll I'll follow up with you, Mr. Messick.
Okay.
Any additional concern commissioner concerns, comments, questions? Then if not, I guess we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, friend.
Thank you all very much. Good night.
Good night.